Come on guys, sorry. Lynn, are you ready?
Pretty ready. I got the copies.
Do we need to make copies? Okay. Good afternoon, everybody. I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order at 3:08. I put 8:03. Thank you. Can we please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag, state of New Mexico, the zealous symbol of perfect friendship among united cultures.
Again, thank you very much. Welcome, everybody. Can I please have roll call?
Priscilla?
Here.
Kevin Mitchell?
Here.
Lynn Heneman?
Here.
Sandra Jeff? Joan Menini?
Thank you, Joan. Board members, we have the agenda in front of us for our work session on the evaluation, superintendent evaluation tool. Do I have a motion? For approval of agenda?
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
Remove approval of the agenda?
Thank you very much, Lynn. Roll call, please.
Mr. Mitch-
Yes.
Manelli?
Yes. Item three, new business, A superintendent evaluation tool discussion. Board members?
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
Just a couple thoughts for starters, my part. One is that last time we had looked at two different forms and chose one, and both of those, I think, were functional. They could be used. The other thought I have is that I would prefer to see a direct alignment between the instrument of evaluation and the position or job description that lists the duties of the position of superintendent. That's a little complicated, too, because we have one list of the superintendent's duties that was provided in the information report to us that came through email Friday that lists, I think it's nine items under the superintendent's, what the superintendent shall do, and then there's another one in the state NIMSA description of qualifications and duties of a superintendent. They're not in conflict, it's just that if we want to reflect those statements, it would take a little bit of working out and study, and also in the, one of the forms we looked at last year, one of the instruments did include a section on provisions for culturally relevant instruction, since culturally relevant instruction is particularly appropriate and of interest in our district, and that doesn't show up in a specific way in the other form that we used, or in the state job description, or the local job description, so we could take either one of the others and still tweak it if need be, or take a job description and develop the items out of those. I think we have some choices. They're not bad choices, they're just what we're here for today.
Mr. Heneman, do you have copies of those that we can review once again?
I have copies of the one from last year. I do not have copies of the one we actually used. We could make copies, except that mine is scribbled all over from when we were bringing over it last year. I don't have a clean copy, blank copy.
Let me look through mine. Oh, mine's. Yeah. Joan or Mr. Chappetti, did we ever find a hot, a soft copy of the Scout McKellen County School Superintendent evaluation form? Oh, Joan did.
Madam President?
Yes.
I don't mind having copies of this one made, as long as it's understood that no one can interpret my scribbles. In terms of what they might mean, because they could be interpreted all kinds of ways, because they're just, you know, how you do little notes, are you thinking about something, and they're not sentences, they're just words and phrases, but if that's the only thing we have referred to, we can use it.
Okay. Joan, can we get copies of this? Did you leave one there for her?
Okay.
Yeah, look at my mind all. But, yeah, but this is the main one that we want to highlight on.
Madam President?
Yes.
I also have, I don't know if I can find it, a set of, a description of rubrics, because the key thing to me is the content, you know, of the evaluation, what the superintendent would be evaluated on, but then there's the method of ranking, or rating, or grading, or whatever. And I'm looking for, I know I've got that's the statement. There. This was a set of descriptors, rubrics for, again, that could be used, it's not the only way to do things, but it takes that fi- five, scale of five levels, from exemplary, unsatisfactory, needs improvement, meets expectations, exceeds expectations, exemplary with a short description of what each of those would mean. And I think five is a great plenty. I could do it with four even.
Madam President?
Yes.
With this, since we're trying to develop a new tool here, you know, I still feel that, you know, going to, you know, keeping it as simple as we can, as far as the evaluation, and that would be, you know, either satisfactory or unsatisfactory, and, because it's so hard, once we get into all these in-betweens, and then trying to rate one through five, because they could be, it's hard when we have, if they're in the unsatisfactory portion, but they're high up in the unsatisfactory portion, or they meet satisfactory, but they're low satisfactory. So if we go in-between, to me, that just causes problems. You know, I honestly feel that we could keep this simple and keep the ratings as satisfactory or unsatisfactory, and leave it at that, with no in-betweens of point system one through five.
I think myself, also board members, that I think that was the recommendation of our legal counsel, to keep it as simple as possible also, and we did this past use the evaluation tool of the point from one, or zero to four, and I think I would really like to see how unsatisfactory and satisfactory will work, instead of having the other categories. I think it would be a lot simpler, because I think that's what kind of took some of our time when we were doing it with the point system, and I think this, this way, this would be a lot easier. Mrs. Jeff, they went to make copies of the old, the former, I don't want to say old, the former evaluation tool that was used. There's no soft copy at this time, but we're going to make, get copies, so you can review that one also. The one that this, this one that was provided was one that Lynn provided us last year, but it was too late to implement, so we just used the old evaluation tool this past year, but now we're kind of adopting a new evaluation tool. And the superintendent communication, you also have the job description, or yeah, the, what goes along with the, did you re- the superintendent communication, did you get that one? Oh, you do?
Madam President?
Yes.
My email still hasn't worked yet, so I don't know, I've been trying to get on to, to, okay, thank you.
Madam?
Yes.
I think we have two things to do with it. We've identified here, and one is, again, the content, the elements in the evaluation, what, what we think is appropriate to evaluate the superintendent's performance on, and the sentence with a preposition there, I said, don't do that. And then what kind of rating system, the, the, in terms of the rating system, and so Kevin has addressed that, and you too, I think if we had, if we want it simplified, I think if we just do unsatisfactory and satisfactory, that doesn't, doesn't say too much. And it doesn't give a lot of incentive for being, doing better than just satisfactory. What I'm getting at there is, I think if we, for instance, had unsatisfactory, satisfactory, and exceeds satisfactory, exceeds expectations, here's an example. In this particular district description of the superintendent's duties, one is to carry out the educational policies and rules with state board and local school board. It's one thing to carry them out and be satisfactory, it's another thing to go beyond that, and actually, as our previous evaluation instrument stipulated, to propose and develop policies. That goes beyond just carrying them out. So satisfactory, unsatisfactory sets sort of a minimal bar to me, in terms of developing something going beyond just the basic statement. So that would be my thinking, that to still have a third level, and then if it's unsatisfactory, any item that's unsatisfactory, that obviously needs improvement. So this, this particular thing I just handed out, where it says unsatisfactory and needs improvement, again, that was just a borrowed model from a particular state, and that, you know, that, they're both, they need improvement, something needs improvement, I would say it's usually not satisfactory, or at least not fully satisfactory. If it's unsatisfactory, it automatically, to me, would normally need improvement. So I can see combining those, and then having a satisfactory, but also to recognize any particularly outstanding performance, I think that's also still appropriate, have a category for that.
Okay.
That's just my thinking.
So it'd be, so it would still be three categories?
Oh.
Exceeds, expectation, satisfactory, unsatisfactory, slash, needs improvement.
I don't think we need to put the slash, needs improvement, because if it's unsatisfactory, then obviously, you know, we need improvement in that area. So if we went with the three, then I, I mean, I would.
Madam? Madam President?
Yes.
I like that concept, satisfactory and unsatisfactory. I think that if we're going to continue to add more onto this, I think that we need to really limit that, because it's either going to have to be satisfactory or unsatisfactory, and that's really my recommendation.
Madam President?
Yes, Lynn?
Thinking out loud, chewing on this, because that's what we're doing. If we have, talk out of both sides of my mouth, in this sense, if it says unsatisfactory and satisfactory, and those are our only two categories, it doesn't prevent us from acknowledging in the evaluation something that goes beyond expectations, and recognizing that, and identifying that. In that sense, it doesn't, the label doesn't limit us from recognizing that. So I mean, I don't have a strong argument one way or the other, because I think we can still do that, where it's appropriate.
I, I think if we continue to keep our comment boxes, like there wasn't the previous evaluation tool, and also the one that you produced, where it has comments, concerns, and recommendations, I think those are, those items can be addressed on, in those boxes.
So that goes back to the form that was used previously, but we didn't use the rating part, because that had satisfactory and satisfactory, but then we used
Correct.
Ratings.
Correct. So can we move on to the descriptor part of the evaluation tool? Looking at, I think I also like the concept of what Lynn was, has mentioned earlier, if we could align the qualification and duties of the superintendent from the one that was provided to us from, in, in the board communication, and then also the state level. I'm pretty sure there's probably stuff in here that's already pretty much aligned anyways. But I would, I would really like to see how that would look also, to use this tool.
And one of the questions come, that comes up then, I think, is whether we see the, the position descriptions, list of duties as up to date. And also, I'd be interested in Mr. Chappetti's sense of that, too, in terms of as he looks at the description, and then looks at what the job actually involves, if there's anything missed, or, you know, that should be adjusted, or, I, I think this, you know, the items are pretty basic. They probably apply anywhere, but any superintendent in any kind of district. I am still interested in us addressing the matter of cultural aspects of things. On the first list, again, on this one, it says carry out the educational policies. Well, if we have a policy, for instance, on offering naval language and integrating naval language and culture, then, you know, it can be subsumed, taken care of under that. We don't have to articulate it separately, but just, just don't know when this description was created, and if it's really up to date. I haven't, I haven't looked at it, but I can say I've really studied it carefully, so.
Because I think, Madam President?
Yes.
Because I know, right here on your, the third one here, where it has employed, employ and fix the salaries of assigned. Even, even at that, you know, even for superintendent to be, to fix the salaries, those salaries still need to be approved by the board, aren't they? I mean, I mean, are, don't we, we have to approve the, those salaries before, I mean, even he can say he wants to give this department director this amount, and that's his salary fixed, but it still needs to come to the board for approval. And so I don't, I don't know how, if we need to, I don't, I don't know if this is, if I'm correct or not, but, you know, that's the way I feel, and I don't know if the wording needs to be, there needs to be wording in there, you know, fix salaries upon approval of the board, or, I don't know.
Madam President, this is, this is directly from your board policy, so if you want to change board policy, that is, that is your prerogative. We'll just have to follow, again, board policy to change that policy, which is to have it as a discussion item, and then a formal vote.
Okay.
Madam President? Madam President?
Yes, go ahead.
I do agree with Mr. Mitchell, because, you know, we've been talking about transparency, and I think that in order for us to be transparent, we need to ensure that whatever comes in through the budget, whatever, you know, comes in and whatever goes out, I think that we need to ensure that the accountability is there. And so, you know, I know that under PED, within their criterias, I know that, that's one thing that they want to ensure, is the accountability, and how we as school board members look at a lot of these issues that come up, especially with the salaries, and as school board members, we have that, we do have a right to, to get a better understanding of how those salaries are being used, and who, who those salaries are going to, as far as the employees are concerned, because I don't want us to get caught in the middle of any litigation, because, or any type of lawsuit saying that we're misusing funds, and that the board approved those funds, so I think that we really have to have an open transparency and accountability at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Thank you, Andy. Yes.
Is, your evaluation tool should be more than just enough, just a reiteration of duties and responsibilities, because frankly, he has, if the statute provides certain duties and responsibilities to superintendent, and that's not really the issue at, at, at the evaluation, it's the manner in which he's conducted them. So you need to look at competencies that are related. In other words, fix salaries, well, he, the superintendent has a statutory duty to prepare a budget for the board, and includes salary schedules. So the fact that, in fact, the manner that the superintendent fulfills those duties is, is, is statutorily driven, the fact and the manner in which it is done and proposed, and whether you, you have other issues, is where you need to go with it. So the manner in which the superintendent performs those duties is what you're looking at. Those can be, you need to look at whether or not you can assign competencies to them, in terms of expectations you have. So it will be, you know, in terms of financial oversight, the board is the ultimate official on govern, on financial oversight, however, that, so that's not something you can pass on to the superintendent, but you can, the manner in which you are interrelating with regards to those duties and responsibilities of the preparation of the budget, where you are, whether you, you know, these things are following along the lines of the expectation of the board, is what you need to rely on. While the board can't direct personnel action, it can evaluate the superintendent with regards to how personnel has been handled in the school district, but you need the competencies that govern that. In other words, you shouldn't have one that says, you know, personnel matters, and now you give, you give somebody, you give the superintendent an up or downgrade on that. There has to be competencies within that, whether it's fair, you know, works fairly and judiciously with that, or avoids, avoids, whatever your competencies are. And there's some competencies that you can get from just the evaluator, from the administrator evaluation instrument that exists in the PED regulations. It can give you a form of some competencies that you can rely on. Also, the evaluative tool should have working with the superintendent, mutual agreeable expectations, and mutual agree upon goals. If it's a school grade, I'm not sure we can even use that, this instrument, since T, New Mexico Teach is not up and running, but the PED assigns school grades. You could come to an agreement that there's going to be a certain goal on improvement or cessation of grades. Those are something that you work with the superintendent and agree on, mutual agreeable goals, agreeable manners, and how that's going to be undertaken, and you set those goals, and you have them in there, so there's total expectations, everybody knows what everybody else is doing. So I would caution simply putting in the statutory duties, and then giving a thumbs up or thumbs down on statutory duties, it's not probably going to get you where you need to. Otherwise, you're going to have to end up with an instrument or tool that's going to require lots of comments, because you're going to have to go through example after example after example. If you want to justify, you know, fix salaries, unsatisfactory, it's going to require you to give lots and lots of examples of it to justify it. If there's seven competencies listed under financial management, or salary management, or keeping costs down, whatever, that you guys decide is a competency, and you have seven competencies under that, you can go up and down with those competencies, and then give your comments, and then you could grade the overall competency. So since there is, since New Mexico law does not provide for bonuses and stuff like that, there's really no reason to have anything but satisfactory, unsatisfactory. So and obviously, if there's something unsatisfactory, it results in growth plan, and you move on. And if there's something satisfactory, you can move on, since there's nothing, there's no incentives built in, there's no allow, the anti-donation clause does not permit the bonuses and stuff like that. You can do that, but your comments can put in there whether you come up to some other decision-making point, such as extension of contract, or modification of salary, those type of things, your contracts drive those, your comments drive those. Okay, so I, 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 I don't want you struggling too much about it, I think, I think there's, there's a way to, to, to do this, and, and at some point, these competencies have, you know, superintendent has to take a look at them and know, you know, first of all, understand them, and understand the expectation the board has for them. So I would caution just simply, not just listing duties and responsibilities, but the competencies and expectations you have under them, and a clear understanding of where the superintendent's authority starts and ends with regards to that. The fixed salaries, like I said before, the superintendent does in fact set fixed salaries on a salary schedule, but is subject to your appropriation and your approval, because you, you're, the board is the one who has to fund it. So it's, it's a working relationship of that, if there is simply no budgetary funds available for it, then the pay scales are going to have to change, but he will change them. for it, then the pay scales are going to have to change, but he will change them. So...
Thank you. Um, Lynn?
Mr. Sanchez? Don't go away. If you could please confirm, uh, something for me. We have this, well, it happens to be on this paper, a list of duties, so on, like you're saying, and then we have this one which comes from the state set of poli, my understanding is that this is also our policy, it's listed sort of as part of NIMSA adopted policies, but I believe those are ours also. So we have two sets, they don't conflict necessarily, but, but they are different. And one of the things about this state one is it has lists and categories, the great, and that's what this form is reflecting, where you have categories of education with subsets of duties and so on, management, the board relations and personnel, but there are some general paragraphs at the beginning, like this one says, "For instance, superintendent is the professional consultant to the board, and in his capacity makes recommendations to the board for changes in board policies and the educational program." Now, that's not listed as a separate item, but it's still an important item, and it's, it's up there in a narrative form.
You could, you could make that a sub-
So any of those things, but you're suggesting we still need have a descriptor of what-
Or you can combine it. That, that could be a sub competency of board relations with the board. Remember, it's, you're not going to be able to change any of these duties and responsibilities if they're driven by statute, or they're driven by policy unless you change your policy, but the policy mirrors statute. So you are, you need to concentrate in you reviewing the manner in which he conducts his duties and responsibilities. So if you have an issue with regards to, um, policy development, uh, then you have, then you put it as a competency, um, whether or not you believe that superintendent brought issues of policy conflict or policy, or necessary policy development to the board's attention. Um, and if you did, then, and you guys didn't do anything, you didn't do any policy development, well, then it's not really an issue for grading on the superintendent. Um, so, um, if you have a series of policies that are running in conflict with how you operate, then the administration, not just the superintendent, has a duty to bring it to the board's attention that we're operating inconsistent with our policies, we either need the policies to conform with our practice, or our practice to conform a policy. So that's part, yeah, I think that would be a sub competency of board relations and relationship with the board. Because that's part of, of, to, to be all straightforward, that would be part of his duty to advise and protect the board in terms of its functions, since you are all, you're not full-time employees or do this on a regular basis, um, that would need to come in as a competency. If you wanted to make it stand alone because it's that important, then, then that's the board's prerogative. This document can be as long or as short as you want it to be.
One more follow-up, if I may.
Yes.
Um, just another example on the state one, says, "Keeps the public informed about modern education practices, educational trends, and the policies, practices, and problems in the district schools." When it comes to writing a competency description, whatever, uh, I have to confess, I'm a little puzzled about how one does that in the sense that you can't quantify it, you can't put da, deadlines really on it, it's an ongoing, I'm saying, it's an ongoing process, and once it's done, then there can be anecdotal indicators or whatever, but to say, you can't say, "Well, you have to do, um, this many newsletters," I mean, you could, but I mean, to, to inform, uh, uh, the public, but there's a number of options and to prescribe that fully ahead of time, I'm not sure if that's wise.
Well, you can make it a part of a, a larger competency of, of, uh, relationship with the community. It exists in the, it exists in the professional, code of professional conduct, there is a commitment to the community, it exists in the adminis, all administrators and their competencies have some sort of a competency related to communication with, with community parents and so forth. So you can have a general competency such as that, that would regard whether or not kept the public informed of changes in curriculum and instruction and stuff like that, and you guys could, you guys could come to an agreement of the, the administration, not necessarily the superintendent, he could probably institute it through his, his own administration of theirs, uh, you know, some sort of meet your school principal coffee, whatever kind of things that you can agree on that will be implemented in terms of community outreach, and you guys can agree that these will take place, and whether he does it or doesn't do it is something you evaluate, if you guys can come to an agreement. Or you could just say, "We want better community relations and we, we think you should be doing more and sending more newsletters." It would be up to superintendent to decide what mechanism he wants to use and whether it will satisfy you.
Or remember-
A lot of these are going to be just expectations you give the superintendent, and you're going to, if you can't come to an agreement on a goal or a setting or an expectation, then you have to leave it to, to the superintendent to decide how he's going to address the competency. And you can give him feedback of whether you think it's sufficient or not sufficient. There's nothing wrong with, you need to do more, or you need to do less, there's too many resources being devoted to this particular thing. The feedback can go either way.
Madam President?
Yes.
I'd like to go back to the talk we had about this time last year, um, when we brought forth the possible platform. You know, the first two years, board set their goals, told me, "These are your goals." I then presented to them what I would do to meet the goals, and that's what I was evaluated on, again, board's priorities. Um, I set the, the list of activities, whether it was a hundred newsletters, whether it was visits, um, different things. Um, the board didn't say, you know, that would meet their criteria or not, and then rated me if I did them or not. We are a pilot district now with the state of New Mexico, we don't do the web eps anymore. Um, we are doing the 90-day plan for every school and the district, and, and that is the, the form I brought to you all. It's a, it's a 90-day plan, which fits in with my contract requirements of evaluating me, um, a mid-year evaluation. Um, so, you know, the 90-day plan is, is the big rocks on the 90-day plan is, is what your expectations are, what are your goals, and then the, the objectives in there are the action items, are what I'm going to do to get the district to meet your goals. Um, whether it's, you know, you want X schools raise a report card, as Mr. Sanchez said, as if it's, um, increased communications, um, whatever your goals are, um, it, it really outlines then, I outline to you how we're going to meet it, and it's a very objective way to measure me at that time, um, you know, if I carried it out or have not carried it out. Um, the nice thing about the 90-day plan is then at 90 days, you adjust it. Um, if you feel what I proposed to you and you agreed to wasn't enough in the 90 days, you know, we, we can beef it up. Um, if it was over the top, um, we can tone it down at that time to, to then go towards the final evaluation. So I, I would like to say, you know, I think that was a much better evaluation, gave me much better feedback. I think I was able to, to meet the goals that we knew we were working for, rather than bringing out a, a multi-page, multi-line item, which, which did bog the district down last year, and it took how many months to, to do that evaluation. It, it was a long, comprehensive process for you.
That's fine for some of the issues of performance, but you also, remember, you need to evaluate superintendent on all those other things, uh, interaction with the board, interaction with personnel, also has certain expectations of all of his school principals and other administrators that are going to be constant across the board. You should similarly have some that are similar to their. Certainly should not be time-consuming to bog down on, but it should be something that the board needs to be able to review, not just simply, you know, here's our 90-day goals, this is all we're going to do, talk about, this is all we're going to do. You all, you have to cover the entire gambit. Um, simple is better. Um, you, you shouldn't have a lot of discussion and time about one through fives, it's up or down, and, and comments, and everybody needs to, all board members need to be committed to the comments, and they, and they, they need to be facts-based, they need to be documented in terms of their factual basis, if you're going to make comments, except for those competencies that, that are generally judgment on whether or not, you know, not, not to my satisfaction, and here's why. So, uh, those are, those are the kind of, uh, ground rules you should make with your form. Your comment section probably should dominate, your examples should dominate any form that you provide. They will be somewhat subjective and they'll be somewhat objective, but you are the evaluator, so you have those, you have those purposes. Um, your board president's going to have to compile them. You know, two board members grading something unsatisfactory does not get an unsatisfactory final grade. So, um, three board members saying something's unsatisfactory gets the final compiled evaluation grade.
Okay.
Certainly your comment, you know, certainly comments from a board member who's not satisfied certainly should probably be addressed at some point, but, uh, it's not going to be the official part of the evaluation.
And I think that when we did this, um, since Frank, um, Mr. Chafetti was talking about it, um, when we did this evaluation, um, first of all, it was the first evaluation that was, that was actually provided, we tried to ask for previous evaluations, but we didn't receive any. But I think with, with us having, um, a very active board and, you know, having our comments, and again, with the, our, our children's education at stake, um, you know, we, we took all, I mean, people criticized us that it took too long, but there was a lot of discussion that had to take place, um, in executive session about it, and it wasn't something that we were going to take lightly and just get it done in one meeting, um, in our one sitting. So we took our, we take, we take this matter very seriously, and I think that's why, you know, again, we're, we're having this evaluation tools work session, because it's very important, um, to, to evaluate and continue to have, like Ms. Jeff said, the transparency, um, with our, our constituents, that this is something that we take, um, um, to heart for our children and that we, we want to do the best we can. Um, we could just say, "Well, we're just going to use this tool as last year and move forward," but again, we're not that kind of committee that's just going to go with the flow. And, um, I'm very thankful that we do have the comments that are, that are, that we continue to discuss this and that we formalize this, and I think, um, I like, um, what has been happening in the past where, with the goals and, um, that, you know, we do set goals this time, we didn't really have time last time, but I think this time we do have that space to provide some goals. Um, I like the ones that we, we previously had, just to move the discussion along, um, I think parental involvement is still a must. I don't think that, um, we're up to par on parental involvement, we still need improvement in that, so I would continue that as a goal. Um, the other one is our Nava language and culture. Uh, we're still trying to adapt a curriculum, we're still trying to get that into our schools. Um, it's not, it's not where we need it to be. So, of course, we always have our communication. Um, so those are the three I really would like to continue to pursue, but I think with the objectives underneath that, we need to be more descriptive and, or, you know, I mean, we need to be more-
Need to set forth expectations is what you need to set forth.
Yes, yes. I think we, we really need to, to have that under each category, each of our goals, too, um, to make it a lot more stronger for us. Uh, I, but I know there's, there's four goals that were produced in the old form, but I don't know how many goals you guys would like to set, but I, again, I think if we keep it simple, um, maybe less than five would be great.
Yeah, and then going back to Mr. Chafetti, your comments about the way it was done before, the form that we, as you know, used last year, had a part two, that was the goals that Silla was just referring to, but it had a part one that had all these specific things. So enough for talking about one rather than the other, and then we did not use the one on goals this last time, as we know, because we didn't have those goals formalized, uh, on the part of the board or together, as this says, the annual goals were developed jointly by the board and the superintendent in, in January, in this case, it was back to 2012 and 13. Um, I think those are, are good because they, they guide, they provide the guidance in our direction, whether the, but whether that means we do not do, or we find where all these other things fit under those general goals, if they do, because I still concerned about this list of, you know, duties and performance-
There's two things.
Things as far as if, if that's in the job description, it seems appropriate that we make sure that's being done, so I-
Mr. Chairman, it's, it's a two-part thing. The first, the matter is that you're going to have to set goals because the school district has to, has to show some, well, whatever expectation the board has for its general improvement, okay? So that is, that is actually a, a reflection of both leadership, administration, management, the whole thing. These goals are going to be the accumulation of a lot of other attributes. Your, your duties, responsibilities, and competencies are going to address the manner in which the superintendent conduct that. In other words, you can have a high achieving superintendent in terms of, or a high achieving goal of, of su, but the manner in which it's being conducted may need to be addressed. Or you may have the other thing was where you have, the manner in which everything is being addressed is not accomplishing the goals, the goals aren't coming up, or they're not being met. So I would advise that your goal-setting portion of your evaluation reflect, um, your expectations for seeing that we're all working together and the school district should show the following, agreed upon improvement over time. You still need to have your, the, what you were talking about, duties, responsibilities, and those competencies set so that you can evaluate in the manner in which it's being done. And those need to be fair expectations, quantifiable as best you can, and fact-based. So your comments, your comments stand out on that.
Uh, Madam, Madam President?
Yes.
Okay, um, Mr. Sanchez, what you're implicating is, okay, I'm kind of getting confused here. Um, with this, with, to my understanding, when you talked earlier, you talked about the expectations, you know, the goal and how we can put more into the goal, but to define those goals, and by finding those goals and implementing that, that could reflect off the evaluation as well.
You can evaluate not only the success of the administration overall, but you can also evaluate the manner in which you got that success.
Okay.
Okay? So what you're going to be doing is that you, you will set a goal, a report, suppose it's just a report card goal on schools, you set a certain goal, and it's met, but the manner in which it met needs guidance, you can provide that as well. In other words, you shouldn't just say, in other words, the end doesn't justify the means under an eval, under this type of evaluation. So yes, these three schools did improve in grade, however, we ended up with 14 EEOC complaints, blah, 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 may not be the manner in which you wanted it, had to have, had it conducted. So you need to be able to evaluate just the general supervision, management, the day-to-day stuff needs to be evaluated as well, and of course, communication with the board. The fact, you know, these schools met their grade goals, but you guys were completely in the dark, is not, is not a satisfactory condition either. So, um, it can go the other way. So, um, you may have, you may be able to say, "You know what, we didn't reach it, but there was a bunch of circum, mitigating circumstances to reach a grade for a certain school, but we, we liked what transpired with personnel, we liked what transpired with getting the right people in the right place." That kind of stuff, you evaluate those day-to-day management issues and grade them up, and you can say, "We're okay with the goal not being met this year, we're going to reset it, and we're going on next year." So you, it, there's, it, it has to float from both, and the expectations just have to be clear and definitive so that superintendent has a fair chance of knowing what you want, and you're leaving it to him on how to get it, and then you evaluate that.
Okay.
And that doesn't mean you can't give some feedback, and there, I would encourage feedback, um, from superintendent as well, from the board, as if you're in the process of, you know, "I'm trying to meet your expectations," you can give some feedback, "As we're not liking this path," you know, you may want to rethink that. Or, "You're right on point, we want you to go down this path." Those feedbacks will come from executive sessions, personnel reports, whatever you guys need to have in terms of information that you're getting along the way. guys need to have in terms of information that you're getting along the way.
Go ahead, Lynn.
I wanna go back to a general point Mr. Sanchez makes about improvement. I think, I mean, I agree with that. I understand what you're saying. The purpose is not just to do something, it's to bring improvement, and we have need for improvement. The best school would, of course, do, but we're, we have clear needs. So that when I look at the state description of the dues, for instance, says supervisors' methods of teaching, supervision, and administration in effect in the school. Well, you can supervise it, but it doesn't mean that you have improvement.
Or that it's effective.
Yeah, there are other examples like that. So if we take those general goals, and if one of those, as we've mentioned, along with the language and culture, parent involvement or parent and community engagement and so on, the strengthening, improving of our general academic scores and performance, then under that improvement, trying to seek improvement, strengthening of the academic performance, we have this matter of supervising the methods of teaching, supervision, and so on, but that's a means to that end. It's not an end in itself.
You can have, you are going to have to evaluate superintendent in the manner in which he is supervised. So there needs to be expectations that you have for that.
I guess what I'm thinking is, is we can use those four or five goals that we've been, you know, referencing for some months, going back to last school year, and build under that or build on that. I think that would be...
I would caution not to combine the competencies with the goals, because you could meet the goals but not meet the competencies. So, or you could end up no, not meet the goals but meet all the competencies. Have the evaluative, the setting of goals should be a separate section, and what your goals are and whether they're met or not, because there may be mitigating circumstances as to whether they're successful or not. So, and then have what you were talking about, duties, responsibilities, and expectation and competencies under those, which has gotta be communication, board interaction, supervision of subordinates, all of those things that are daily management issues that even the superintendent has towards his own administrators, you have towards him, and what your expectations are, and he can meet those, and he can rise and fall on those as a management issue.
Okay, but let me pick on that a little bit, and you can respond. Generally, I think, I accept the idea, I didn't make it up, but the idea that a superintendent's success is the district's success or vice versa. In other words, if the district is growing and its test scores, its retention of staff and so on, the superintendent, this buck stops there. So the superintendent is, his evaluation ultimately is how the district is doing. Same way with the principal. If the school is doing well, that's what, that's the job the principal is doing. Now, there could be on the other side where something is being done in spite of that particular leader, and that's possible too, but I'm not sure, I'm just questioning the separation you're making there.
The distinction is quite simple. The super, you might have issues with management or supervision by the superintendent despite meeting goals. Yes, I would think the superintendent would have a large role to play on the success of these goals, but remember, you also evaluate the manner in which he obtained that success. Certainly if the superintendent's successful overall in the improvement of the school district, the evaluative tool is probably not gonna result in anything dramatic, other than we would like to further guide you along this path. So, yes, but you still have the ability to talk to the superintendent and evaluate him on the manner in which he obtained it. So it's not inconsistent. You certainly, you know, it's not gonna, can you justify some sort of permanent personnel action? Probably difficult if the goals, the overall improvement of the school district was dramatic and very effective, but you could say, you know, to make you a better manager and be in line with what we think our community needs, you can evaluate the manner in which you did it and ask for some improvement in that area while still sustaining your goal and your improvements. So I don't think you need to say, well, look, if a school does wonderfully, I think even the superintendent would agree, if a school does wonderfully, does not absolve of the ability of the supervisor to go in and say, yeah, you got the job done, but we got some problems that we need to work on, if you so see that. If you're happy with it, then you're happy with it, and you'll grade accordingly.
So, does anybody need any more clarification on that? I think...
I think the board should, Madam President, should go forward and probably decide individual companies and expectations that you would have, or a set of both management criteria, which falls along with what Mr. Heneman is talking about, the duties and responsibilities, that just don't restate the duty. You need to have expectations under it. And you have a section where you would like to address and come to the table with the superintendent and set some goals.
Um, Madam President?
And if it falls already pretty much in line with the superintendent's talking about with a ninety-day, a ninety-day plan that's already in existence, you can, should be pretty easily accessible to set a goal.
Yes, Mrs. Jeff.
I'd like to get a copy of that, you know, what you've had before as far as the ninety-day goals. I'd like to see a copy of that. And I really liked, I don't know if Mr. Heneman burned a midnight oil by putting this together and just going through his evaluation. I think it's pretty, it's pretty broad. There's a lot of information that's in this, and I think, I don't think I really like his recommendations with what he had put together, so I really wanted to commend my colleague here. Very direct with a lot of the descriptions. And I think this is really a good key versus, you know, these, the other evaluation form. And so, you know, I, when you were talking about earlier, you know, you were talking about trying to make sure that all of that was implemented, and I think that that was really the key here, and so I really do commend Mr. Heneman for putting this together.
And Mr. Heneman did recognize, we've spoken as well about it. You know, your evaluation of superintendent is gonna, is gonna be, is gonna be a larger document than any other document that the superintendent has with regards to any of his administrators, because there's a lot, there's a lot to it. So the real issue is whether or not you can have, the expectations are clear and defined, superintendent understands them, and that they're reachable, or they're sustainable, or they're fair.
I think the, I think the, I also agree with Sandra. I know that he worked typing this up, and we do have a soft copy of this that we can continue to revise or look at before we set the final approval on the superintendent evaluation. I think that the only part missing on this evaluation tool is the board goals.
Yeah, I understand that.
Yeah, I think everything else is on there.
Yes, Lynn?
If we can, if we take both of these forms, the one we used and the other one, that reflects the state NIMSSB list, under each category, there are statements, performance indicators, they're called, on the one we used before. I take that is to be essentially your, you can't think of the word all of a sudden.
The expectations.
Yeah. And on the other one, they're called descriptors within the category, and I was just trying to pick out an example. Here's one on interprets finances, interprets the budget and finances to the community. Just happens to be a quite specific one that happens in this form. But again, I think those are the things you're talking about. Am I correct?
Yes, absolutely.
And then there are a couple in this form, if we were, if we were to consider using this, there are a couple that probably are out of date because they were addressing specific circumstances last year in our directives and so on, but we can pick those out and review them. Those are under Part Five, special directives, and see if those are still appropriately...
Being specific in expectations is not bad, Mr. Heneman. It avoids the, avoids having any issues of, I don't know what that means, or the board not even going back at some later date and going, I don't know what we meant. So if you have specific expectations, whether it's during, you know, budget, whether you have a finance committee and you expect superintendent to do certain things during the finance committee meetings, those are some things that have to be expectations that are drawn out very specifically in there that he can do or not do, and understands what that expectation is. So whether you have public finance meeting, for example, when you're doing budget preparation, your finance committee has a, has a specific statutory role that they have to fulfill. The superintendent is part, statutorily part of that committee. You can have, you know, shareholders were there, we expect all shareholders to be, blah, 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 that kinda stuff, whatever those expectations are.
So Andy, let me ask you a question also. One of my biggest pet peeves about the budget is receiving it very late in our, in the year when it's ready to be sent to PED. I really would like to have that earlier than previous years. I think the past two years, we've really been pushing to get that sooner. Could that be one of the directors or descriptors?
Sure. I mean, as long as you understand that if you get a budget that's, that has, when the unit value hasn't been set, that kinda stuff, you, if the board understands that somebody's making a guess as to the unit value and you're moving forward, yes, it's absolute too. And I would, there's nothing wrong with it, especially since if you're gonna have, maybe the discussion for the board is what big buckets you're putting money in, and the exact amount of money's not really at issue, those are appropriate to have, as long as the public, everybody knows that you have, you've got a draft budget without knowing what the unit value is, that this is nothing but an educated guess.
Yes.
By your, by your finance people, as to what they think the unit value's gonna be and how much they're gonna have, what your enrollment's gonna be and so forth. So you have to be aware of that, the public has to be aware of that, so that when you do get your final unit value, you get your final budget, and you approve, and the dollars aren't exactly like was discussed two months beforehand, that everybody understands why. But can it be done? Absolutely it can be done, with those, as long as everybody knows the caveats.
And on that same note, Madam President, just like this upcoming year, I know that, I've been reading the paper, the Albuquerque Journal and the Farmington Daily Times, and I know that we're having issues with the state budget. And so there's gonna be drastic cuts coming up this year in how they're gonna fix the budget for next year. And I think that by implementing some kinda tool within the financial descriptive, I think we need to add something in there as well when we have the declination of funding that's, that's coming from, you know, the state, because I don't want to put our district in a bind, and where are we gonna find other funds to superside, you know, the budget that's not even there to begin with? And so that, you know, I kinda do have an issue with that, and so, you know, I know that there's been a lot of spurging as I had looked at the budget, and I think that we can also limit the stipends or the bonuses that these, some of the assistant superintendents or maybe other employees are receiving, because that is part of, you know, ensuring that we do have those funds.
Ms. Jeff, I even, I don't know what it is. I know that the governor has asked that all agencies cut back five percent of, in other words, not, they have to be five percent under their, what their budgets would have been at the halfway point of the year. Even in 2008, when we had the great, the decline, the original decline, the state exempted school districts from any of those budgetary requirements, but I don't know if that's gonna be the same case here. Obviously, there's gonna be budget issues that're gonna have to be raised. Obviously, the board needs to be aware of it. You need to be aware of it as you go forward. There's a whole lot of factors that go into it, Ms. Jeff. If you go to the end of the year, do you wanna have a high cash balance so that you can go into next year? So in other words, you're doing some cutting here to get a cash balance. However, you don't wanna do that cutting if the PED's gonna sweep the cash balance at the end of the year, and you won't have it for next year's budgetary purposes. So there's a lot of unknowns that are still involved here, but obviously, you know, the oil and gas revenues are just not what they are, and you have already set a budget, and the state's already set a budget, and you have to be prepared to roll into next year's budget, and if there is gonna be an allowance to help your next year's budget by having built a cash balance, then you need to be, you can be conscious of that. But those decisions need to be made along with what the PED is directing in terms of what the PED is gonna do.
Yes.
And whether you guys make, you guys may make investments this, capital investments this year in terms of the things that you know you can't do next year if the budget goes down.
Madam President, and I'll address, our district has been very conservative compared to Albuquerque in grants. We didn't give the six percent, eight percent raises that they were then locked into with their bargaining units, and that's what's come back to haunt them. We were very conservative. Our board has been very responsive to that. If we have cash available, we have given it as one-time addendums for retention of employees. We're not locked into the issues that these other districts are. And our board this year actually really took heed from our CFO, who is very on top of forecasting and then very on top of being conservative, and we've actually started, there is a cash balance that we can have by law. It's a reserve.
Reserve.
And our board has actually approved to put several million dollars into the reserve this year to hedge in case we have what happened in 2008. 2008, we didn't have the fund, the reserves to fall back on, and we balanced the budget on the administration's backs. Administration took days of furlough and such to cover the one million dollars, or actually, it was a little over, almost two million dollars that the district was gonna be short, so it didn't affect our employees or our programs for kids. We're actually using the times where our district is sitting better to start forecasting for the dry spells, God forbid if they ever come again. We are allowed to keep an X percent, and I can have Chief Financial Officer, when she comes here, turn the superintendent's report, speak a little bit more on how much we're allowed to keep. I believe it is five percent. We are slowly working towards five percent to where this year we put two percent in. So we are on top of those things. I think our board, again, I commend them for doing, listening to her and making the appropriate budget choices for that.
You have to keep, you guys are gonna have to keep on top of it and find out. There was, there was, there was a year where the PED did sweep cash balances, and those are very, that's when boards of education went and bought school buses and vans and automobiles to replenish their fleet, because there was, if they didn't spend it, they would give it back to the PED at the end of the year. So there, you have to be on top of making those financial decisions that may require, you know, whether or not you want to invest in infrastructure if you're gonna lose your cash balance.
What else would you like to discuss, Lynn? Go ahead, Lynn.
I was just counting, the two evaluation forms that we have, the way they are set up now, the one excluding the section on special... the section on special directives, this form has 27 particular items. The one we used last year has 39 specific items. That's plenty in terms of going through that long process. So it seems though that whichever we pick or which one we work from and tweak or whatever, I do for keeping the goals in there as part of our direction and really overall measure and so on. And then I think we can work from either one, but I think the one we used last year, I mean, caused a lot of discussion by us to consider different things, but it did take a long time. It became impractical almost in terms of getting it done in expedited fashion.
But I think, Lynn, two or three of those meetings, we didn't have a full board. I think that's why we moved it again to a next meeting because we said at the beginning that we would have a full board to discuss any superintendent evaluation. And three of, I think two or three of those, we didn't have a full board. So that, we would have probably got it done a little sooner.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I'm not particularly choosing to argue for one or the other. I think either one will get the job done, and we just need to get it done. But I know that the one last year was pretty lengthy.
If the board's already debated, the 39, the one, then it's probably more of a revision and kind of redefining and re-tweaking it in terms of making whatever was unclear clearer or eliminating that that was superfluous and do that. So I, probably it's better to cut from a larger document than it is to try to create, add to an existing document. If you guys have already debated, certainly you now have.
It's familiar, it's familiar already.
Yeah, Ms. Jeff is a new member of the board. If she can have some input into how you combine some things and get clarification on others, then you probably have your full board in agreement with at least the bones of an instrument.
Which way shall we go, guys?
Well, Madam President, I would go with Mr. Heneman's evaluation, but to keep it satisfactory and unsatisfactory and take out the remaining and then also leave the comments concerned. That would be my recommendation.
Mr. Heneman, when you were working on this one, you had this one, the old evaluation tool, you kind of had it hand in hand, didn't you? I don't remember.
I'm not sure what you mean by hand in hand.
Like, when you were generating this, were you using this as a resource?
No, not really. No, I was just using the state NIMSA duties and performance responsibilities, they're called, and the five levels came from a model from another state. But the content is this of the state. And this constitutes our policy as well as the other list, but I don't think there's anything in the one we did use and had been used before, there's nothing in there that doesn't also reflect in principle the same kinds of duties. So I don't see it as a problem because it's not piece, you know, one-to-one all the way through. Sometimes there are things you fight for, you argue about because you think something's right and wrong. I don't think this choice is a right or wrong. It's just whichever one we can do to.
I do, I provided a copy to the board of bone structure one that I had. I'm not sure if Mr. Heneman had that or used it, but I did provide some, and it has some list of some general competencies that fell along, just that for administrators. You're certainly free to take a look if anything of that can fit in there.
You provided that to the board?
Yes, I emailed it to everybody. I can email it again.
Please, because I don't.
Yes, last year, remember, he did provide us with, I don't know that we ever printed it out, I thought we had enough paper already. But yes, he did provide us with a model or one that could be used.
I'm just kind of looking at, Mr. Heneman, your evaluation tool that you generated and then the previous one, and one says, like 1.1 says, "Effectively communicates with all members of the board." I think that if we could look at some of these and see some of them can be implemented in this evaluation tool. Does that make sense?
Ken?
If it.
Put some of these in there. I think that, and this one, I did end up typing it up. It's not really my evaluation tool. I think on some points, it's a little more specific in its descriptors, but that varies too because sometimes the other one is, I'm not trying to talk out of both sides of my mouth, I just think it's not a clear-cut choice.
Mr. Heneman, you're talking about that one.
There's a little more detail to me in the descriptors under this one. I think we're familiar with the one we used last year, and there was some overlap, I think, between the one on board relations and, I don't know, there was one, I know there are areas where it seemed to address the same thing where we could maybe say eliminate one because it's covered under another one.
I think you should be conscious of being able to make a distinction between your evaluation of whether or not it communicates effectively with the board and the question of communicates effectively with me. Okay? One is supposed to be outward, one's inner. So you can have two questions. How you perceive communications, not just with you, but with other members, with the board in general, and whether you want that to be how you look at it or you want to have a subsection of that as how you communicate with me.
I'll give an example, going back to where I think, on this one, for example, there's a performance indicator that says, "Effectively works with the board at all board meetings." And I, without being out of line, I think that's one that we saw as fairly positive. But it doesn't say what effectively is. You know, so we make, we end up doing that. We make our judgment based on what we see. Whereas over here, repairs and submits to the board, informs and advises the board, provides timely advice to the board, it just seems to be more specific in the way it describes those things. So, but again, they can both be done. I'm not wanting to argue for a choice here, unless we start, something emerges where we see something that's critical.
I think Frank had a question. Do you have a question, Frank?
I go back to what you're saying, communicates effectively with the board. There needs to be an expectation, how I communicate with the board. And again, communicates effectively with me. It's a two-way relationship that is not evaluated by one person. That's the issue I have there.
Well, I think.
And I did bring that up in the last evaluation when we met.
There may.
I won't go into it in public.
The board needs to decide what its expectation, what its view. The term effectively, the evaluation process is not, you can make, you can try to make it as objective as possible, as quantitative as possible. But it boils down to, there's five individuals who are going to decide something on a subjective basis. The real check and balance of this is that it takes three to make it final. It takes three to make it up or down. So I, you know, you can't be wrapped around the axle of effective. It's going to be, it's going to be the eye of the beholder in some of these aspects. Some of these things are quantifiable, whether you, you know, does this, does that, does this, it's clearly definable, clearly identifiable. You try to make that as best you can, what you're looking for. Some of these things are going to be subjective to the individual board member. Whether you think he's been effective or effective with you or effective with the board, those type of words are going to require you to just vote your conscience, grade your conscience. And whether two other board members join you in that assessment is going to be the That's why, that's why it'll go in the personnel file and nobody will ever see it. It's a matter of opinion in a personnel file. It's the, an evaluation is the epitome of a matter of opinion.
And so, board members, I really would like your opinions on the goals. And since we have our superintendent here, I think, you know, developing or giving some suggestions, I mean, I gave you three of mine. I don't know if you guys feel the same on those three areas, but I think that we really need to come to a consensus on our goals for the superintendent.
Madam President, can you list your three again?
Okay, previous years, we've had superintendent's communication, a clear vision and mission for the district and sets priorities based on these. And they're on, they're attached to the evaluation form on page eight. And then the second was parental involvement, advisory school council, open door policy, public comment, positive school climate and consumer service. I mean, these can change, but I still feel that, you know, having that superintendent's communication be a goal still, parental involvement still a goal. And then the third goal was Navajo language culture. Superintendent works with principals and all staff to gain support of Navajo language culture incentives and programs. And the fourth was attendance and truancy. Superintendent develops strategies to improve attendance and, I hate seeing this word, minimizes truancy by maintaining safe and healthy school environment. Those were the four that we've had previously. I still feel one, two, and three should, we still need to continue to, that's my feelings. But, you know, I would like to hear from the other board members, please.
I think the goals, I don't know if, because the goals are included in the evaluation. This is where I, I don't know. But then we have a work session just on goals.
Many members of the public wanted to have input on the goals. We didn't give them the opportunity because this meeting's advertised as an evaluation tool. Now, on tonight's meeting, we do have a discussion item on, once again, talking about a, yeah, let me find it. Ya da la, I got the ya right this time. Tonight, we have the board retreat dates discussion, and we've been talking that at the retreat is where you'll set your goals. So I don't know if this is an appropriate time to really be setting goals.
Well, I think there's a difference.
I think.
They can set a value to goals. I mean, I'm not sure they can, they're certainly not going to discuss the overall goals of the Board of Education. I think they want to talk about something to put in the evaluative form.
I don't know if the board was on the same page as I am. I thought this, your goals, the superintendent's goals are part of your evaluation. The board's goals are our goals for ourselves.
For the board.
For the board.
I think there's a dis.
That's what I thought. I don't know, I thought that's why we wanted a work session, was to do board goals, our goals as a board. I don't, I was assuming that, but not your goals.
They can set individual goals for you. It's going to be, they're going to be different than the school boards or even the school district's goals. They're going to have to be targeted towards what they expect you to accomplish.
And I'm completely fine with that, Ms. President. Again, though, as we've been going back, we've been talking board goals this whole time, and everything that was just laid out was the board's goals, not evaluatory goals. So we can say they're separate, but if we're saying they're the same, I'm confused.
No, I think they, I think that's going to be, they're going to be, they're going to set these goals, but they're going to have to look at it in terms of how you accomplish them, not how the board did or the school district did. So there has to be some discussion because these goals have to be mutually agree. If you're going to set goals, they've got to be mutually agreeable. Okay? So there's going to have to be, Mr. Chappetti's going to have to have some chime in of exactly what do you expect me to do with regards to parental involvement? That's a, that's a tough one because you're depending on a third party to do something. So you're going, there's going to have to be, what do you expect him to do on his end? Whether parents participate is going to be a choice that they make on their own. But you can set it as a goal that you want to increase parent participation, and here's the expectations we have for you, Mr. Chappetti, to help us improve that.
And even, okay, let me see. Even if our board goals were the same as the superintendent's goals, we would have, like, how would we help with parental or communicating, communication district-wide? How would we help with parental involvement? How would the board help with the Navajo language and culture? It would be different.
You as a board might have different goals. You might, you might want to hold a meeting in Crown Point, but, stuff like that. Or you might want a visit to a chapter house. That's going to be different. One of your, one of your notes of your goal for that is that you made it a superintendent goal.
Yeah.
That's one of the things that you're doing to meet your goals aboard, is that you made it an evaluative goal for the superintendent. And then you guys agreed on agreeable accomplishments that would be looked at.
Madam President.
Yes.
I think I understand what you're saying in terms of the board having some of its own specific things it wants to do, but I really think the superintendent's goals and the board's goals need to be the same when we're talking about major overall goals. The board's job is not to go out and do it. The board's job, to me, is to see what's needed as representatives of the various parts of the district and then set a direction, often through formal policy, often through discussion and prompting other information and so on. And then it's this superintendent's job to make those things happen. And when I look at that, these examples from before, in other words, if we say we want Navajo language and culture taught, our job isn't to go teach it, it's to make sure that the superintendent makes sure that the people do it who can actually do it. At that point, that becomes his goal. Now, he may have some specific sub-goals of his own. He might see that, man, this year, we just didn't get a certain thing done operationally. And he sets that sort of personal administrative goal or objective for himself, and that's separate from this overall global kind of district thing. I mean, he might say, "We gave a lot of professional development to this group, but we really missed this other group. We didn't really bring in any training for the custodians. I don't want to get that done next year." I mean, a specific thing he sees, and that can be his prerogative and so on. But it seems to me that we have articulated also already as a basis for the budget, certain overall goals, and that was used by the business office and what they designed. And so I think that where we can help achieve our own goals, you know, we're willing to do that when it comes to parent and community involvement engagement. For example, as we are involved with school forums or chapter meetings or something, that's in support of that. But it doesn't displace that we want the school, just like this year where the superintendent directed or mandated principals to meet, go to chapter meetings. I was in line with that, and that accomplishes that at least a piece of it. So I think that the goals that we want in here are. think that the goals that we want in here are simultaneously board goals, district goals, but it's not exhausted. These are the overall, the large picture goals. And there can be specific things, like, as mentioned, maybe last year, we looked at the schedule, and it's been raised again this year for board meetings. And there aren't very many outside of Gallup. And our goal might be, we want to have more access to, or have, the communities have more access to board meetings, and so we'll set some more, some additional ones out at different schools. But that's, you know, those are just specific operational things along the way. But I, the ones I think, again, that have been mentioned repeatedly in the last months are, one is the Navajo language, Navajo language and culture, implementing, you know, programs to integrate Navajo language and culture and Navajo, the way it came out now, Navajo and Indian Studies in the curriculum. I see Navajo language as distinct and, as another related distinct goal to implement programs that support the revital, strengthening and revitalizing of Navajo language. I think that's unique and important enough to have its own, be its own goal. The one on academic improvement, we, we, district find ways to bring improvement in, in academic performance. And that might say something more or not in terms of as measured by state standardized tests or, and/or additional measures. And then the increasing parent and community engagement, which is already there as parent involvement before. I have in my mind, thought about having one on internal operations, but I, I don't have it formulated. In other words, nothing here addresses the goal of having full involvement, communication, and so on internally with staff, staff and faculty. And I say that because I think some of the experiences we've gone through the last year or so has shown us that there are concerns about open trusting working communications internally on different levels, not necessarily revolving only around superintendent position, but can be at all levels. But superintendent and the board still has to address that in terms of, if, if professional teachers have input as professionals, but they're not being heard, it could be something totally different. I mean, I know that in the community in the last years, at times, there've been a lot of concerns by bus drivers about different things. I don't know all the details of that. I just know some have felt frustrated or dissatisfied at times. And then there were, I think there was a salary increase at one point provided, and so on. But I, that's such a general, and I haven't framed it in my mind. And I, and I don't know how you all see that. You might have better insight on that in terms of whether we need a goal on, on just improving internal communication and operations that, sorry, I don't have that worked out better.
I, I don't know about the internal communication. I just feel very weary that the first thing that we're going to get dinked or something on is your, the board is interfering in personnel issues. And, you know, I think that's something that, even though we may have good intentions of what you said, Lynn, you know, building that communication and having that open trust and professional input from them, you're always going to get that person that's going to say, we're overstepping our boundaries and we're violating the Open Meetings Act, or, you know, this, whatever they, that we've, we've heard and, yeah, we've, whatever we've heard in the past, that they're going to use that against the board. And I understand you have good intentions, but I think that's what I'm, I'm nervous about.
Madam President, while the board does not have the authority to direct personnel action, it does have the authority and has a right to have information about it. And you do have the ability to evaluate superintendent on how he conducts personnel issues. It's a, it's a real question of, of the board not, the boundary line is that you cannot direct the superintendent as to personnel. The decisions as to personnel are his own. Information about his decisions, evaluating him on how, the manner in which he conducted his personnel actions are within the board's purview. Okay? So, there can't be direction, there can't be implied direction, there can't be coercion. But there, but you guys can get information on, you guys can receive a personnel report. There's not, that doesn't violate anything. Okay? And you can get that information. You can't direct the superintendent to do anything particularly about it, but you can get the information. And you can evaluate him if you've, if you think that the manner in which he's conducting or dealing with personnel is not to your expectations, and you can evaluate him on it. And you can communicate that. And you do that through your instrument.
Well, that answers a lot of questions for me. I'm just, I feel sometimes I'm walking on eggshells with, you know, and, and I know Frank's offered me to come in and talk about those kind of things, but I'm still very hesitant because I'm just still at that point of learning stages and, you know, whatever been thrown at us in the past, you know, I'm just very hesitant. So, thank you for making that clarification for us. I think that's very important information that we do need, you know, that we, we can get information about staff once you request it. And, but we cannot direct. So.
Can we clarify how we get information?
Yes.
Because I think that is the issue.
Information about personnel should probably come through an executive session that's being held pursuant to the Open Meetings Act as to unlimited personnel matters, to receive a personnel report from the superintendent. And it can even be more specific as regards to, for example, I, I, not that it exists, but personnel complaints deriving out of Crown Point. And you guys could receive a personnel report from the superintendent in closed session as to what's happening there and what's going on. Again, if you don't cross the line until you, you get to the point, you cannot direct him to do anything about Crown Point. And you have also the ability, as board members, to communicate to the superintendent during those reports of, people are coming and they reported this to me. Constituents have called me and told me this. You can give that, you can give that information to the superintendent as well in those sessions.
Madam President.
Yes.
Thank you for clarifying that, because I did have a, a town hall meeting and had asked the principal if she could make copies of the parent complaint form, because the parents were requesting that. So, some of them didn't know the, the process. So, we got a copy of that, and so I put it there at the table, but I, the, the principal kind of went over it with me. So, I just basically went off with what she informed me and told the parents, this is what you need to do. Now, you know, quote unquote, and I was told that I was requesting them to file against certain person. And so, you know, I really glad that you made that clarification, because that's not my responsibility to tell these parents how to fill it out. And it's not my responsibility to say, to turn it in against a certain, you know, employee. So, you know, sometimes we have to clarify that. And so, you know, by you telling us that, you know, we can, if, at their request, as parents, and they have an issue, or even students, you know, for me, you're just basically, here you go, and just go through the process.
Equally, you have to also understand, when you're a board member and you're doing something by yourself, you, you really don't have any authority as a board member. It may be perceived otherwise by those around you, but otherwise, you don't. So, so-
So, I really didn't do anything wrong.
Probably the best method of communicating with individuals who have an issue is to send them up to Janice Mann. And the complaint procedures are there. They already exist, they already exist in your policies and procedures. So, when you get approached by somebody, you know, if, if you're perceived to be the person who's going to solve, then you, you become the de facto HR director by, by simply being open to it. I, I would advise that you direct people to the mechanisms that are used to bring it up, because you would also like to be, you also want to maintain your ability. And suppose it's a student issue. You get involved in the weeds in a student issue, it comes through and it's a student disciplinary issue, and all of a sudden, there's an appeal to the board, there's going to be a lot of pressure for you to recuse yourself because you were involved in the original. You could be a witness. The parents may call, want to call you because you were the one who said X, Y, and Z at the start. So, it is better for personnel, students, that you just direct people to the mechanism. Good luck with that. And then, you know, we'll ask, you know, I will ask the superintendent if he knows anything about it next board meeting. I'll ask the school, and he'll ask, and he'll, he'll tell me if the principal does anything about it. That's probably your best way, and let it come up, and see if you need to address it at your level, when it gets to your level, when you're with your fellow board members. And when you're with your fellow board members at a duly called meeting, you have all the statutory authorities of the board.
Thank you for clarifying that. And I hope the newspaper make sure they put that on there.
Madam President.
Yes, Lynn.
I want to withdraw my last comment, in terms of, in a goal dealing with internal things for two reasons. One is, I think that can still be covered, it is covered in some of the specifics in the other part of the evaluation. And secondly, if we have those four major goals dealing with Navajo language, Navajo language and culture and Indian studies, parent and community engagement, and academic improvement, that being a huge one, if, those are all, if we make prog, if we can make progress on those four this year, that's, it's better to focus on those four than add a fifth, I think, to diffuse attention to those four. I think that would, that'll be major if we can really make headway on, in those four.
Yes, I agree.
So, maybe in this evaluation tool, maybe in here, we can add to it the complaint process, you know, if we feel the complaint process is being followed as it should be or, or, I don't know. Where would that fall into? Would that be under?
Well, okay. On the one forum, there's community relations. If we're talking about complaints for, from parents and public, I think that's one thing. Complaints from employees might be another, another process in some ways. But the community relations one, it's not specific in there on this forum, but it could be considered, perhaps in connection with that, responding to community interest and needs and so on. The other one, here's the, where'd it go?
And the reason I say this is, you know, because we have, I mean, I've been on the board almost going on five years here, and we have never had a hearing of any complaints being filed or anything. And I don't know if it's all due to not following up, not following through, and what happens. And then two years later, they're still coming to us with the same complaint, what happened. You know, that's when they start coming to the board, is when, after a year, their complaint has never been answered, hasn't been addressed. Then they come to the board, and then they say, well, I presented this complaint such and such date, and I never heard back. They're not doing nothing about it, and we still have the same problem.
Those probably, you, you probably have something in your evaluative tool, Mr. Heneman, that deals with responsiveness to personnel complaints or community complaints, or just in the relationship that you can redefine as doing that. I don't think you need anything, you don't think you need anything, oh, let's talk about complaint procedures, because then you've got to figure out what they are.
Yeah.
So, it's basically responsiveness. If you, if you evaluate and say, look, we're getting the same complaints over and over and over again, that goes into whatever rubric you have for, whether it's a community complaint, complaints you're getting over and over again, or, or a student, or whatever complaints you're having. Of course, you have to, you guys have to evaluate it on whether or not it's factual and based, or perceived or otherwise. In other words, simply because you got complaints doesn't make them an issue. Now, if they are complaints and you guys have already addressed and say, look, we do have this issue, then you, then you can, you can evaluate on that. You have to agree it's an issue first.
Okay.
Madam President.
Yes.
I just referenced with my colleague here, I think that with what we're discussing, we can go ahead and put it under the special directives. It's kind of like the last, fourth, is it the fourth page? The fifth page? It has special directives, part five. See? So, we could probably add that in as number, let's see, number 10? No, 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 no. Number 13. Number 13. It says number five, special directives, and it says continued. And then we can implement that. Yeah. And put it on, another box there.
So, board members, once again, on our board goals, our number, board goal, I mean, I'm sorry, superintendent goal on four, Lynn, you were saying you want academic to be one of the goals?
Academic.
Academic improvement.
Yes.
And again, I think that's been addressed before. One of the things I think that came out in the budget that was responsive to that was the thing about reading specialists. I think there was a provision in there that was in terms of accomplishing that.
So, Madam President, I do agree with the three goal, the three goals that you proposed, and then add in, and Lynn's academic. But I think we just need to be more specific.
On the academic goals, or on all of them?
On all of them. On all of them. I think one thing that I really do appreciate about the superintendent's communication is our weekly reports that we receive. And I would like to continue that. Weekly, no, oh, okay, I see what you mean. Our weekly, W-E-E-K, reports that we, that we receive. I think those are very informative. And they also address some of the public concerns or public comments that we receive. And I think we need to really continue that communication. Also, with his participation in the chapter meetings and public forums, I think those are also something that was a big plus when we did this past evaluation. I think we need to continue. But the one part that we were having a little bit of feedback from the community was feedback, follow-ups. follow-ups. I think it's something that we need to continue to emphasize also. Excuse me. And he agrees with that, even though his mic's not on again.
Hundred percent agree with that. There you go, Peter.
Any recommendations under communication from other board members? The parental involvement, I love the fact that we do have the advisory school council. I would like to add the Indian Education Committee to, under the parental involvement. And his, of course, the open door policy, he's always conveyed to the parents, even when we're out and about. I know that's one thing that he continues to inform the public, our parents about. I think the thing with, oh gosh, I just lost my track of mine, wait, hold on. Oh, there was something I was going to say about that. Parental involvement.
On parental involvement, I'd also like to put the forums, that the board's requesting, that way I can coordinate those forums for you.
Which forum, sir?
The board has asked to start doing forums in their communities.
Oh, forums?
Forums, yeah, F-O-R-U-M, not, F-O-R-M-S, sorry. The forums, I think that's a good one to get the parental involvement on. The ones we did at the end of last year were, I think, very good. Mr. Mitchell's in Toachi High, the one at Throo Mid, and then the one here in town. So, I would like to coordinate those with each of the board members, to continue those.
I think, I don't know what I was going to say earlier, but I think with the public comments, like I said, those are mentioned to us back in the, our board communication. The only thing that, I don't know if I'm able to ask Andy, you can make clarification and stop me if I'm going over, is that when we do have a concern, or a concern is brought to our superintendent, like, we don't know if it is resolved or not in our community, and then that constituent comes back to us and says, you know, I know I turned in this complaint. So how can we have that informed to us from the superintendent? Is that something doable?
You can have it. Part of your weekly report, whatever you want, yeah, of course you can have it.
Okay, because I, like what Kevin said, I don't want these to continue to drag on to a year, a month. You know, I mean, if there was a complaint filed from a parent, how do we know that was addressed? I guess is what I'm saying. You know, was it resolved? I mean, that's all we need to know. Yes, I did look into it. That could ease a board member's mind, that could, you know, relieve the parent that yes, it was resolved, or I did, it was checked on. I mean, that's all we're looking for, I think.
Yeah, it's just the manner in which the report comes. But the student personnel matter, it'd have to be an executive session. If it's just a general complaint from the, from the, from the public, you have to, it could be in the weekly report that's available, or it could be done in a board meeting, in fact. So it's, it depends on the subject matter of the complaint, and who it's about. If it's about a student, it's about student, a matter, then you would, you could have a superintendent's report with the appropriate withholding at the, under the Open Meetings Act. If it's a personnel investigation report, or complaint against a personnel, you could do one under that exception. But just a general complaint from the public, probably have to do that in open, you can get a report back just on your weekly report, or, or some other mechanism. And again, I'd like to go back to communication. A lot of these complaints are filed at the school level. I'm not aware of them. So then when the person talks to you, if it's not brought to me, I can't address it. I can't address what is not allowed. And I think that's where a lot of them were. And we still are working on changing our policy to, recommendation to bring to you, to have all the complaints come through the superintendent's office, and then forwarded to the school or person who the complaint is filed against. And that way, there is a tracking mechanism.
I think that, I think that'd be the best way. That way you're always kept up to date, and, because I know a lot of these principals, I know they get complaints, and they don't follow the guidelines of meeting the dates, the dates, the 10 days, or whatever, how many days, they're supposed to respond back. But in, in a case that they do respond back, we always hold the parent or whoever's complaining accountable, if they don't meet their days. But when it's the other way around, it doesn't matter, you know, if, if...
It depends on what the complaint's about. If this is a Section 504 issue, something like that, then you need to direct, or to the principal, the principal needs to direct to the 504 coordinator. The coordinator has an entire procedure that has to be followed, and the eventual appeal is to the superintendent. So, all you need to get is an update that it is still in the chain of resolution, and then when it gets resolved. If it gets resolved at a low level, and you want to know about it, then it's just a question of requesting it from the superintendent, and he can give you a report on it. You know, if it's a Title IX issue, that you, that gets funneled to the Title IX coordinator, and there's a whole list of grievance procedures that have to be followed within that, that, and if the administration misses deadline, it gets kicked to the next level. And if the, if the administrators don't do their job, the next thing you know, it ends up on his desk, and it doesn't have anything attached to it. I would imagine the superintendent might have words with those below him, that he's solving, he's solving a grievance at his level, because nobody, nobody addressed it below.
Well, I think that's one thing that our constituents still need information on, is that process, as Mr. Jeff indicated. Parents are wondering what they, what their guidelines are, and just here recently, I would say in the last year, is when I started really understanding that process myself. But I think we need to have that information out there. I don't know if, if, I know with technologies, we can do wonders. I, I know with the new website that we're trying to do, you know, at one time, there was a complaint form that you could just click on, and it pulls up. I know, I tried to look for it, but I think those, there's so many things changing on our website right now. But I think even having under or with that complaint form, a separate tab, and a one section for parents and a section for staff, the process, so people, I mean, this, just all, again, transparency on the part of our district, to our parents. If they don't know, I mean, some don't even know there's a complaint form. We're not letting, we're not bringing that mental, that up.
Educating.
And that, that needs to be something that we need to continue to help our parents with. And it shouldn't be anything that administrators, principals, teachers should be hiding, or trying to put to the side, or not even have a complaint, a complaint against them. I would be using it as a tool to say, wow, I need to improve in this area. I need to do something, you know, I didn't know they really felt like this. It's like a cry of help. If, if they're not going to have that resource, we're dis servicing our parents. And if they, if we're using that, if staff or administrations using that as, well, I'm going to get in trouble, or some, they shouldn't, because it's just something that they should be using as a tool to guide them and to improve. And, but I think that process, we need to, thank you for that, you're going to look at that, and we're going to be getting some recommendations from you, because I think that's something we do need to look at, is the complaint process, and see what our input as a board and as a district can do to help our parents.
Can I, can I say something really?
You can set it as a goal, and you can, you can...
Can I say something? Okay. I just wanted to kind of just touch base on our board president. You know, like I had already talked about earlier, you know, I'm glad that the high school principal, you know, basically told me, here's a complaint form, and they have three days to fill it out. After the three days, she will respond to their concern, and if they're not satisfied with that concern, then it goes to the superintendent. During the town hall meeting, I had parents that came up to me that had a concern with that, because their concern was, why is it going directly to the superintendent? And, and they fear, I guess retaliation. And so how do we, you know, how do we deal with that type of issue? And this is coming from the parents. And this is, you know, and this is also coming, this, this also deals with some of the employees as well. And so, you know, it's, it's a really touchy situation. I also, the next day, the first day of school, I introduced myself, and went to the classrooms, introduced myself to the teachers, and then to the students. And so, some of the teachers, you know, spoke with me, and they fear retaliation. So how do we deal with those type of issues, you know, and, and implement that, as far as the evaluation is concerned? Because we're talking about, you know, getting, in, in dealing with communication, we're also talking about dealing with, you know, the, the, the internal, you know, the internal issues.
Well, there's two different issues there, Ms. Jeff. First issue is whether you have, sufficiently have, and set in your policies and procedures, a process by which employees can agree, and you should have a policy that allows that. They need to utilize that. The policy itself provides against retaliation. I'm not sure there's anything you can do, there's no safeguards you can really put into place, other than your policies and procedures that say retaliation will not be tolerated. The bottom line, when it comes to a personnel matter, superintendent will be the final art, well, final, final decision maker. With regards to how you guys, you guys need to evaluate the process, and how it's being utilized, and whether or not you, you're in line with how personnel is being done. You guys also will evaluate employee morale, and everything else that goes along with it. But the processes, I would caution against anybody being involved in the processes before it gets to you. I mean, the grievance procedures are there for a reason, and it has certain, not, not everything that goes, nothing, it doesn't go from the first level, first level supervision to go to the superintendent in one day. There's probably, there's supposed to be a lot of people in the rung here, and how it works, and perhaps the employee will get a resolution somewhere way before getting to the final decision maker on personnel. I don't know what the particular issues are. If somebody wants to lodge a complaint against the superintendent, that's a different policy and procedure that you deal with. Okay? But when it comes to personnel, what, you, you, you can't do it. You can't, you can't take a, you know, I don't, I don't like the fact that I was graded badly by a school principal, superintendent didn't do anything about it, it's not a complaint you can remedy.
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
Yep.
So it's not even going to be heard, under a grievance. So, there's all of these issues that go along, but the evaluative process is, you're going to have to take a look at how, how you perceive things from going. As board members, you're going to attract a certain number of people that think everything is great, and a certain percentage of, of your constituents are going to think everything is really, really bad. I, I would caution that there's a large percentage that are in the middle, that, that either things are okay, or they trust that you will do your job and fix whatever needs to be fixed. Okay? So, I wouldn't put all your eggs in a basket of, a teacher's told me that things are very bad in the school, that things are really bad in that school, that needs to be gone through the process, where, you know, the print, that, that if there's a grievance, you know, if a teacher says, look, this is really bad here, then here's your grievance process, and let it go, and come through, including through the union. Okay? If that, if it turns out that there really isn't a bad atmosphere in the school, the grievance will, 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 the process should work out where it comes to, it comes to an end. Whether the employee's satisfied with it, or is not, is or not, that's a different question. But did the process work? Okay? If you guys believe the process is not working, that's the evaluative tool, that you need to understand where is the process breaking down? Is it that grievances are going from employees, directly to the superintendent, and contrary to everything in between? Then you can address that. So, those are, those are the type of issues you have with that. When teachers decide they want to come to you, that, I would caution that you go through the process, Ms. Jeff. Otherwise, you will always be the recipient of, of all of those complaints, because you're perceived as being somebody who's going to make, who's going, who's not only going to accept the, the grievance, but is also going to remedy it. And that's not the role you have. You need to have the processes, and then oversee the process, through your policy development and what you expect. If the policies and your grievance procedures aren't being followed, you could take action. I know that wasn't exactly what you would, I mean...
No, I, I understand, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, that others do understand that, you know, that there is a process, and I respect the process.
There's very, you, your ability to affect a personnel matter is somewhat limited. But the manner in which your administration is performing with regards to personnel, and if there's widespread low morale and everything else, that is certainly within your, your evaluative purview.
Thank you.
So that was under parental involvement. My other part that I want to address under the goals of the three, Navajo language and culture, I think that, I don't know how realistic it is, but I know it's in discussion, when I attended the meeting with Dr. White and Doty, that the OLA testing, did I say that right, Mr.?
Yeah.
Okay, the OLA be completed? I think, I think they're looking at a pre and post with the students that are attending the Navajo language and culture classes. I know there is a goal out there to do every native Navajo student, but that was kind of an unrealistic for our district at this time. But I think right now, having the goal that each student complete the pre and post of the OLA, and then also continuing to work on the curriculum, is one that I know is very, in, in the process, and they, I think we just need to, I don't know how we can word that, but continue to, make sure that, that curriculum is moving along, I don't, I guess you can say. The other thing I would recommend is that we continue to relook, maybe quarterly, that we are following, and both the Navajo Nation and the district is following the MOU that's in place, and also the Indian Education Act. I think we need to just continue to review that, and not put it on the shelf, or forget about it, or anything. We need to continue to see what is in that MOU. We need to continue to see what is in that MOA and Indian Education Act for our children. Those were what I would add to the goals of three. I don't know if there's any recommendations for that. Oh, and one more thing. I think that it's important for our district to give follow-up under that category to the Hess Committee, the oversight of the Indian Education. I, and, and that was one thing that I really appreciated with today, and I want to thank the superintendent and the board, my colleagues, for being there today to address the issues of, of that. I think it was a good collaboration that we had, a good work session, and we need to continue that, even with our Zuni neighbors and the other districts around us. It was a really good collaboration among us. And I just want to continue to keep that momentum going with that. But I think also reporting to our, the Hess Committee or even the whole Navajo Nation Council delegates would be something, a plus for our district also.
Madam President, can we add Doty to that also?
Yes, sir. Yes. Doty, report, yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
I think we're at this point agreed on including the goals section in the evaluation. We've identified some specific measures and so on, but I think we have still to make this, this choice between which instrument to, to use, even if we modify the one we use. I don't know if we want to take a straw poll or someone make a motion for one and we can-
No, we can't.
Vote or-
What to do tonight?
Oh, okay. Okay.
Discussion, yes.
Okay. Because the last meeting, we also had discussion of board goals as a discussion item on the agenda. Other than that, can be formalized with-
Yes.
With this too, then? Okay.
Seven B.
I see what you mean. Okay.
This is just discussion, yes.
So this, we have another chance to make arguments for which instrument.
Okay. The next page after, from the Ola evaluation tool, is, there was a place for the vision. And I believe that this past evaluation tool from the superintendent, he did provide a vision to us. Would you, board members, would like to continue the vision from the superintendent? It was on a separate document that he provided to us, and I'm looking for the hard copy. But it was, was after this one. After, remember, he provided this and then he had attachment. You don't have it, Ken? Yes, that one. Do you guys want a copy? Okay. If you guys would like to add that to the evaluation? Yes? No?
Madam President, I'd like to take a look at that first before-
Okay.
Is he getting copies?
I mean, it's optional, yeah, he's getting copies. It's just optional. I know it's not, it's not, again, it's not part of the, the one that Lynn provided, the evaluation tool is just an extra piece, just like the goals. You know, it's, it's up to you, board members. If you want to include the superintendent's vision, I think it was just informative that, I mean, I just wanted to bring it up because it was part of the Ola evaluation, Ola evaluation tool.
I doubt, Madam President, that, you know, I think that the vision that we got from him prior is probably maybe at this point in time, he may want to reword it, change it. I, I don't know. I don't know if that's what he would want to do or if he's going to just stick with the same vision and, and move forward. I know that, you know, as, as board goals and board visions, we, we do try to change our goals and visions as we go along. I don't know.
Excuse me. Yada. No, I, I just went down the long, wrong tube. I would like to get, when he steps back in, I do like to get clarification again in his comments on the goals, because it does say that we do need to work jointly with our superintendent on these goals.
Madam President?
Yes?
Who put this together? Was it the board members?
No, that's his, that's Mr. Chappetti's vision.
Okay.
And if you look on page nine of the previous instrument tool or evaluation tool, that's on there. And what I'm asking is, would you guys want that on the new tool that we adopt, that we approve to include a vision? We, I mean, it's just something that I'm asking, if we can or we can't, it's up to you.
I think, I think we could probably keep this vision, his vision, as part of the evaluation. I, I think with our last evaluation we did on him, we never justified his vision, what he's done with it, what he's going to do and how he's going to do it.
Madam President?
Yes?
I think if it's to be included, it needs to be articulated at, at the outset because it's something you strive toward, not just evaluate on after the fact, just like stating our, the goals that we were discussing. So if, it's a little odd to me to evaluate somebody on their vision, but on the other hand, it's very important for a leader to have vision, have that vision. So if that's articulated at the beginning, then it falls in line in terms of evaluating whether it was accomplished and to what degree.
We can make them bonus points.
Madam President, I kind of have a concern with this because I don't know if it colludes, you know, with the evaluation itself because it's, it's his vision. I, I don't know. I'm kind of very skeptical.
That's kind of what I was saying. Do you evaluate on the accomplishment of the vision or the quality of the vision? Because it just asks, in this old form, what it is, but then it also says, how will your leadership guide the district toward that vision? But that's looking forward, not backwards for evaluation purposes, so. Just ask for that to be articulated, but if, again, it should be upfront if it's going to be used, I think.
I do not have an nay or say in that. I think, if you guys want to remove it, we can remove it. It doesn't matter.
I'll go either way, you guys want to go on that?
Okay.
I guess we'll decide that tonight.
Okay. Okay. Any other discussion on this? Oh, I needed his comments on the goals. Mr. Chappetti? On this one, if the, there are recommendations, because it says jointly, develop jointly with the board and superintendent, I just wanted to know his, his input on the board, I mean, on his goals that we have for him. I know with the first one, there you are. Sir, I had a question for you on the, on the superintendent goals for 2016-17. You heard the discussion on that part and the parts that we wanted to add. I just wanted to know your input on that, sir.
I'd like a little bit of time to review them, especially with my leadership team to state how we would go about meeting them. So, formal. Again, to say, are we on the right path for what you're looking for?
Yeah.
Again, we're presenting to five individuals. So, some, some of the things you've put on there that I can continue to do to meet those goals, others, we might have some other ideas to, to do to meet. But other than that, I, I think it's, it's well in line with what we're looking for.
So I'm, I'm just, hmm.
So, Madam President, with, with that being said, tonight is, you know, it's on the agenda as an action item. So how, would we just put it in there as goals and then go, and then have him discuss it and then come back to us? Or how, how, what do you?
I, I think with, with my comment on that is, these are the, sir, sir, these are your goals. They're not your administrative team's goals. And I think that, that's why we're, we're discussing it this evening. These are not something that, I, I don't know if I'm making sense with that.
If, if that's the case, I cannot run the district and meet those goals by myself. This is a, I, I have to, and as my board policy, delegate some of the items that I'm doing and work with. So again, how are we going to meet the goals are some to come up with. You are going to vote on the instrument tonight. That is the instrument.
Yes.
The, the manner and the way I'm going to meet the goals is between me and you. It's not something that we really vote on. It, it's something that's acceptable to you all to say, yes, this is, if you do this, you're on the right path to, to meeting the goals. Vice versa, is it too shallow? Is it too deep? But if I just say, yes, I personally can meet all those goals, you, you've given me way too much. But then again, at the same time, if those are the goals that I'm going to be evaluated on, I am going to work with my team to meet those goals. And, and that's the thing I need to address, is what else can I do with my team? I'd like some input from them to say, this is what we also can do to ensure that I am getting a good evaluation to meet those goals.
Your instrument's fine. You can go with those goals. You just need to put the expectations in that are reachable by the superintendent alone. Your, this following meeting, you'll, you will set goals for the school district. And those will be a combined effort of the Board of Education and the administration to reach certain things. So it really just includes what you put down is the indicators for those goals. So the instrument's fine.
Thank you.
With that, board members, any other questions on the tool, the instrument tool we're going to be using? Yes? Any other discussion?
I think we, I think our clarifications were met and we're ready for tonight's, and we're ready for tonight's school board meeting.
So with that, board members, could I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Ms. Jeff. Roll call, please.
Mr. Heineman?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Manuel.
Yes, it is now. Thank you. 5:35.